Simplified by the leaders in this room tonight. As you serve in this community in Olin Tangi, we thank you for your dedication and your leadership, and thank you for all that you do. The world is changing and the needs of our students are changing, and the importance of the school board can never be emphasized enough. And you play an intricate role in the complex, challenging, and ever-changing process of educating our youth. And tonight, I come on behalf of your association to thank you for your service and dedication. I'd like to read the official proclamation from Governor Dewine in recognition of School Board Recognition Month, January 2020. "The service provided by the members of Olin's of Ohio City, Village, Local, and Joint Vocational Boards of Education and Educational Service Centers, Governing Boards, is critical to ensuring high-quality public education for Ohio's schoolchildren. Through partnership with teachers, school administrators, staff, and parents, School Board members provide vital leadership and support for schools. And we thank you for your service and for the positive difference you make throughout our state." So again, thank you for your dedication, and as your association, we're happy to continue to serve with you as you serve the children of Olin Tangi. Let's give them a round of applause.
Did Governor Dewine have to attach any additional funding to that?
I double-checked for a check, but it did not come this time, but we'll keep our fingers crossed.
He likes to veto things with Olin Tangi in them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She always has to get it in, doesn't she?
Just very quickly, in closing, I'd be remiss if I do not mention the OSBA is hosting a Mental Health and Social Emotional Learning Summit on February 25th at the Greater Columbus Convention Center. And we're excited because there's actually a group from Olin Tangi that will be presenting at a breakout session at the conference. I want to let you know that the summit is a free event from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on February 25th, and I invite each of you, if you are able to attend. And I do have some flyers that, if I could just leave this with the communications director, but it's a free event, open to the public. We just wanted to have the opportunity to help as many as we can without having to pay a price for it. So if you could spread the word, we'd certainly appreciate it. I will admit, you have to register. Please register. We only have spots for about 1,100 people, and we're quickly getting to that 1,100. So register as soon as you can, and we welcome you to be a part of it. Thank you again for your time this evening, allowing me to be here with you.
And thanks for joining us. And thank you to our district for showing their appreciation with those lovely flowers, especially in this weather.
Yes. Thanks to be here.
Okay, we'll move into the Board President's Report. So I'd like to start off tonight with some uplifting events that occurred since we last met on January 9th. This past weekend, Mrs. Fiesel and I had the pleasure of attending a portion of Olin Tangi's Model UN. We were amazed by this event. This weekend-long event involved 281 Olin Tangi students. It was completely student-organized and with teacher and advisor support. My favorite part of the entire initiative is the empathy it builds in our youth. Students stepping away from their lives, allowing them to see from different perspectives and searching for large-scale solutions facing the countries that they represent. It gives me faith and hope in our future. So this is a picture from our trip there, and they had a series of events. This is the book. This is the program, which had all the resolutions from the countries. These kids spent a lot of time preparing for this. It started on a Friday afternoon, all day Saturday, 8:00 to 10:30, and Sunday, I think, until noon. And they had a talent show. Those girls were, I hope they got best costumes.
I know.
But it was really nice to attend. On Tuesday, Olin Tangi presented testimony to the Senate Education Committee for Senate Bill 200 to establish screening and professional development in the area of dyslexia. Literacy is critical to student success, and Olin Tangi is a leader in this area. So we give special thanks to Holly Roberts, our district dyslexia specialist, for her testimony and dedication to educating our staff and helping serve our students. Holly, testifying. Now, moving on to a time-sensitive topic, I'd like to discuss a critical issue facing our district, and that would be the March ballot issue. We are on the ballot in seven weeks for two reasons: our lack of state funding and our continued growth. The school district has two avenues for revenue: state funding and taxes, local taxes. The Board and the district have regularly communicated to the community the status of Olin Tangi's funding or lack thereof over the past decades. To address the lack of funding, the district has created a school advocacy committee to lobby for fair funding. Our district leadership have testified at the State House multiple times. And Olin Tangi was a member of the Alliance, which is a group of districts faced with similar constraints on funding caps, which lobby legislators. These efforts did bring forth fair funding proposal in the last two state budgets, but both Governors Kasich and Dewine line item vetoed the remedy, bringing us back to square one. Our community has supported us on several of our past ballot issues over the past few decades, and we greatly appreciate this and can attribute our district's ability to flourish and to provide high-quality education at a low cost per pupil. We've asked, but without relief from the state and continued enrollment growth, we have to come back to our community. A no vote would not change legislator's mind or the funding formula. What a no vote will change is Olin Tangi schools as we currently know them. Programming and service cuts are necessary for us to keep expenses from exceeding revenues. The district has been vigilant in cost-saving measures, and over the years, we operate at a lower administrative rate than most schools. We have 111 administrators for our 22,000 students and our 2,620 employees. We've saved more than $3.4 million in utilities since 2014. We've saved $8 million in healthcare costs. And the district has been recognized for seven straight years consecutively with the Auditor of the State Award of Distinction in Fiscal Management. So I urge voters to compare Olin Tangi's expenditures to those of similar districts on the Ohio Department of Education website. You can look at teacher salaries, administrative salaries, cost per pupil, number of administrators, and see that we are below that of our similar districts, and we spend less per pupil to educate our students. We're always looking for areas to save. However, if this levy does not pass, tightening our belts won't make the difference that we need to combat our growth. Deep cuts are what will get us there. I'd like to spend the remainder of my report discussing the cuts needed to reduce our expenditures to a level below our revenue, beginning with the 2020-21 school year. And as stated in Mr. Rafe's superintendent letter to our district families last Friday, any areas that are above state mandated requirements are on the table. The community has elected us to oversee the school district, and a Board of Education member is a nonpartisan role. But I understand the declining faith our country has in its elected officials, and I understand the skepticism around swallowing a 7.9 mil levy. We all live here, and we will feel the same consequences that we would bring before our community. Not one person sitting up here does not live in the district and pay Olin Tangi school taxes. Mr. Rafe, Mrs. Fiesel, Mr. King, no longer have children in this district, yet they remain and pay the taxes. And we promised our community three years before we would come back to the ballot, and we've made it four with our cost-saving efforts. We've explored all viable options, and we don't have the authority to make developers stop building homes or charge them impact fees for doing so. That is not legal in the state of Ohio. What we can do is partner with them to secure donated land for future buildings that we need and work in conjunction with Delaware County on initiatives that bring commercial revenue to our district and help relieve the burden on homeowners. So that brings me to my final point. We have asked the leadership for a list of programming that's offered that are not state requirements. They've provided us that information and their associated costs for us to talk about. But during this time, I feel it's imperative for us to focus 150% of our time and effort on passing this ballot because it is what is best for our students. So on March 17th, if this issue does not pass, starting March 18th, we will focus all energy on prioritizing the items that we're about to discuss for the 2021 school year. So with that, I thought that we could engage in a conversation about Mr. Rafe's superintendent letter. Does anybody have any comments? Julie?
Well, one of the things that we had looked at was a tax, an income tax, as opposed to property taxes. And I've gotten this question, as the district has: Why don't we look at other funding models? One of them is, and again, the school districts in Ohio are limited as to how they can raise revenue. One of them is through property taxes. Another way is through an income tax. But there are some myths out there that I want to dispel. First of all, an income tax doesn't necessitate a rollback on the property tax. So when you implement an income tax, that doesn't mean we're taking away any property taxes, because we still need that money. We are growing, so we continue to need the money that we've passed prior. So if we passed an income tax, we would still need that money, plus any money generated from an income tax. An income tax would only be charged back to our residents, not the people that work at Polaris unless they live in our school district. So there's some confusion on that. People think, well, if you work in this school district, then you would have to pay a school district income tax. That is not the case. It's the people who live in the school district that would be paying the income tax. So again, we would be taxing our own residents again. However, when you pass an income tax, you take out any commercial taxes that would be included in a new levy, like we're doing with the property tax. So right now, with a property tax, anyone who owns property would be charged with a new raise in their property taxes. With an income tax, those commercial properties, they're not impacted by that. So whatever the income tax rate would be, we would have to make up the difference of what we would be losing in new commercial property taxes. Now, the commercial properties would still be paying the taxes that we've already passed on their properties, but any new money on an income tax doesn't affect the commercial development in our school district. Currently, in central Ohio, Big Walnut, Buckeye Valley, Canal Winchester, Bexley, Pickerington, and Reynoldsburg, those are the school districts that have income taxes. They also have property taxes. Bexley was just on the ballot in November for a nine-mil levy. Pickerington will be on the ballot in November 2020 for a new money. Big Walnut is on the ballot March 17th with us for a renewal of their property tax levy. So having an income tax doesn't take away the need to continue to pass property taxes. So I want people to realize that. There has been some questions on the homestead tax exemption that is available to seniors, and unfortunately, elected officials did away, or actually, they didn't do away with the homestead exemption. It's still there, but they instituted income levels. And so the homestead exemption is now only available to those people who make less than $30,000 a year. So many of our seniors make more than that in pensions or, you know, other investments that they have, and so they're disqualified. That is nothing that we did. Members of the Ohio General Assembly instituted those changes because the state makes up the difference. So if you qualify for the homestead tax exemption, the state makes up the difference. And so in order for them not to have to make up as much of a difference, they changed the rules. So we did not do that. I feel awful that they did that, but we had nothing to do with that. So I wanted to clear up some myths and rumors about that. Now, I did look into a sales tax, because in 2017, there was a law passed that school districts could impose a sales tax, but there's a trick. They have to go through the county, and there's only one county in Ohio that does this, and that's Medina County. They have to go through the county. The county actually implements the sales tax, and then the county determines how that money is going to be spent. So in Medina County, they passed a sales tax, but said it could only go to the schools to pay for buildings. So in Medina County, they still have to pass property tax levies to pay for the operations. And the other trick is, the school districts all have to be contained within that county. So there's some question on if Delaware County would even hit that requirement, because Buckeye Valley goes out into four different counties, and you have to split the money. So you split the money based on how many students are in that county, but you also have to split it with the Career Center, because that's a public school district. So in Delaware County, it would be Buckeye Valley, Big Walnut, Delaware City, the Career Center, and us, and they can throw in the Department of Disabilities, because they do education as well. And so that's what they did in Medina County. So, you know, people keep saying, well, there's got to be other ways. The other ways aren't necessarily better ways, unfortunately. So we have to work within the parameters of state law, and that's what we're doing here. So if you want a primer on taxes, I just gave it to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments, Mr. O'Brien?
I mentioned a couple of points. I thought that the coupling of your report with what Mr. Rafe has sent out, I think, is well done. And two things occurred to me while you were giving your report. As you talk about the efforts that we as a district have been making over a number of years, it was about eight, nine years ago. Talk about messaging, that Dr. Lucas and I and Brian Kearns, the treasurer at the time, testified at the State House, and the phrasing and the concept we used was fair funding then, and we're still asking for that. The other thing that occurred to me as you were speaking is, as you think about the efficiency and the number of administrators we have, think about the fact that we have administrators over 26 buildings because of growth.
Right. Logistically, they're pretty spread out.
One thing Mindy and I did promise, we promised that we would vocally say, because they asked us to put this on letterhead, we don't have school board letterhead, but they wanted us, there's a group that wanted us to say vocally on tape that our administrators, particularly Mr. Rafe, will not receive a bonus if this levy passes. And so we are going on record, and we've gone on record before, but they asked us to do it on tape. And so you've got it on tape, nobody receives bonuses when this levy passes on March 17th.
I think, too, it's important to touch on what exactly extracurriculars are. So, you know, when you're at the elementary level, they look a lot different than they do at the middle and high school levels. So, Mr. Rafe, would you kind of share a little?
Well, they're certainly extensive. As you see, when you approve those lists, every board meeting is, you know, fall, winter, and spring, and the year-long supplementals we have, you know, they're broken up into a variety of areas. Athletics is probably the most costly, the most supplementals, when you talk about head coaches and assistant coaches across the board in our 28 varsity sports. So those are the most extensive. And then we have a full array for visual and performing arts. So the band directors, and the orchestra directors, and the choir directors, and the supplemental contract, and those are elementary, middle, and high school. Those are, you know, all contracts for duties outside of their normal contracted teaching day. So they're for extra duties. So obviously, all those things happen outside the day. And we always, I don't know if anybody has ever actually calculated the amount of, how much are coaches making their supplemental contracts, but we know it's not very, I guess...
I think it's negative three cents in my house.
Coach Fiesel is, he isn't enormous, Mrs. Fiesel, but they certainly, I mean, again, they're decent money, but they're not, on an hourly basis, the people doing supplemental contracts put in a lot of time. So, you know, there's the full array of athletic supplementals, the supplementals related to the visual and performing arts. You know, elementary-wise, we just started the choir supplementals, and we've got literally hundreds of kids in every elementary school coming in the mornings and doing the choir performances in all the grade levels, enjoying it immensely. And then you look at all the different supplementals that we have for various clubs that we create, again, supervising kids, giving them opportunities to do activities outside of our curriculum. And then there are supplementals that, because we're administratively, I think, lean, we have department chairs and building supplementals for adults who work in academic areas, so providing leadership and support within our buildings. And they're critical for the building principals to provide instructional leadership within the building and support the academic mission of the building. So, what I missed, Mr. Meyer?
Diversity.
Oh, yeah, 24, 26 diversity liaisons is something that we've here added in the last few years. That's been, obviously, a major focus for us. You know, so again, the areas are just so vast because we have so many opportunities for our kids. Now, we do spend, for all of those supplementals, we spend about $3.5 million, which, when, again, you look at our total budget, it's a small number. It's not a big number in terms of the total budget of 200 and pushing, what do we have on this five-year forecast now? Pushing $246 million in expenditures, total expenditures. So as a percentage, that doesn't include the transportation costs for athletics and field trips and those kind of things. But as a worthwhile investment, you know, if you ask the kids, what's their favorite thing in their day?
They're probably not going to say math.
Some might, but...
Some might, but...
So that's, you know, that's, and that's the hard part about that, about facing all this, because there are people who think we shouldn't offer all these extracurricular activities, and why should other people in the community pay for somebody else's kid to play a sport? But it's part, it is such an integral part of our entire academic program. It is so important to developing well-rounded young people that contribute so many life lessons. Again, people that have been involved in those things, whether it be the marching band or an athletic team, or in a leadership position in service club, or whatever it might be. And those are the things they remember most about their experiences in our schools.
I want to reiterate that any cuts that, if we fail, which we do not want to, anything that's on this list wouldn't be impacted until August of 2020. And we would have to come back to the voters, because we would still need additional operating money. But we would have to come back to the voters probably at a different rate. It may not be 7.4 mils, because the voters have already told us, no, we don't want 7.4 mils. So we'd have to look at that. So it could be a reduction in services even if we would pass another levy. It doesn't get better.
It doesn't. And, you know, we had $25 million, I believe it was, in cuts in 2011, and we haven't fully recovered from that. That's why our administration is as lean as it is. So we haven't yet rebounded. And so my fear is that if we have to cut services, the voters have said, no, this is too much. You know, you've pushed us beyond. We're still out of space. Like, after next school year, we're still out of space.
You know, we had a lot of conversation throughout the course of the fall as we were planning, you know, people get an email from somebody saying, this totally came out of the blue. And I refuted that in the fact that the reality for us is that we started planning this levy the day after we passed the last one, because we started discussing, how long can we make this one last? Can we make it last? Obviously, we're going to make it last the promised three. We made it last the promised four. And we openly say we may have been able to make it last another year of five, but the building needs really compressed that timeline for us. But the other, so now we're at the point of talking about the building needs accelerating us, and then that got us to the discussion about our operating needs. But as the Finance and Audit Committee would attest, and, you know, as they looked at that from a next three years, four years, five years, 10 years perspective, as we all know, the earlier you ask for operating dollars, the lower the number would be. So if we would have waited a year, we'd just be having this discussion a year later, and our space constraints would be even more significant. And the 7.4 would have been more like 8.9, because the need, you know, again, when we're, and I understand, you know, this is a large increase, as all of our increases have been. Some in the past have been...
10.5.
...milts, but they've been, I mean, those are, so if you look at it in totality, it is a 15% increase for the average taxpayer, but if that is stretched out over four years and you normalize it to 3.5% a year, because that's really what happens. It is a one-time increase of 15%, but then it gets normalized over the number of years till unfortunately have to have another one. And again, hopefully, when we're successful in March, we'll start that planning process for how long we can make that next one last. But as we put the package together, it was a conscious decision to look at what our debt capacity was, what could we get in one vote, as opposed to, let's get an elementary now, smaller, maybe a smaller operating millage to go to open the elementary, and so on. But this millage opens three buildings.
Right.
And at a lower cost, because I believe it gets us, like, grandfathered in on some building requirements.
Right. So for the storm shelters, that, because of the moratorium in place, if we get the funding in place and we have the building moving now, it's half a million to a million dollars in savings on the cost of the building. So it makes sense for us to do that now and not wait, not only because of space constraints, but because of the costs of regulations that might come.
And, you know, again, I appreciate your sentiment in the report, Mrs. Patrick, about the builders and developers, and we have been working with them. We have historically worked with them to get land donated, to get utilities to our sites so that we can build the buildings at a lower cost. I tell, in all of our community presentations that we've been doing since January 6th, and we're over 20 so far right now, we've got about 70 to go, but it's free now in March, and they're starting to fill up after March. There's, the sites we have, we currently own plenty of sites for buildings for the future, which I think was good, prudent planning. There's still no utilities at those sites, so we are working with developers to donate land and to bring utilities to those sites to help keep the cost down. You know, and it is disheartening. I don't know, I guess, I don't want to, personally don't want to spend a great deal of energy for us to worry, to discuss what we would be, what number we want to reduce and what we would reduce. I don't want to see our community come in and start cannibalizing each other. Don't cut sports, cut the arts. Don't cut the arts, cut sports. That's why in the past, we maybe haven't had some of the discussions that we're having now at this level, because it is so upsetting for people. Because we don't want to cut anything. Everything we do is valuable to somebody. But just on a very surface level, all extracurriculars gets us 3.5 million, state minimum busing gets us about 2.5 million, that's six. If the deficit in the forecast in a year is 15, we still got to consider $9 million in cuts. So that's 150 staff positions? And then, so I need to comment to somebody today. I understand you don't like your taxes, but do you like your school district? And they said, absolutely, I love everything about it. I said, well, if we don't, if we're not successful, you're still going to have your taxes, you're not going to have all the same things that we have in the school district. So you're going to hate your taxes, and you're going to hate your school district. Help us out.
I just have a question. On that top line, Emily, is that line 6.010 from the forecast?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's the rise over run. So we're showing that what we're bringing in on the forecast is not covering the cost. So we're showing that what we're bringing in on the forecast is not covering the cost. And the list that we had prepared was taking a look at that $15 million deficit and what we could do to potentially get to that number should we not be successful in March. When we go back and look at our millage rate, though, if you think about the 7.4 mils that we're asking for and you consider the building space is still needed, if we would cut the $15 million out of the forecast and still need to build buildings and operate it, we'd be at a roughly four and a half to 5% in a millage rate to continue forward with the incoming growth and such. The 7.4 mils that we have is covering three buildings and keeping up with almost two mils that we need year over year just for student population growth. So it's not out of, when you do a quick math on that, it's not out of realm or overly stated, I think, 246 and another mil point four for the new operating of the growth that's coming in from the buildings and opening those particular buildings. So that growth would still be coming regardless. But we'd also have reduced programming and services to our students to still operate.
So what you're saying is if we're not successful in March, you still need to make those cuts, plus we need six mils at least for growth. Paul, how much would you say for?
We would need about four mils, four to five mils. If we make the $15 million cuts and keep moving, we would still be back on the ballot for four to five mils. So instead of seven-four, it would be four to five.
But with reduced services?
Yes.
And your buildings would open later?
Yes. Because we probably wouldn't be able to meet our build-out timeline for the first elementary.
And that is why we're looking at the March ballot as opposed to November, because if we start now, we can open in time for the 21, 22 school year.
Correct.
And just for perspective, two, two additional mils on the, for the average taxpayers, about $245.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Not that I'm saying $245 on that. Is that minimizing, playing frivolous with anybody's money? But.
Thank you.
We're just here to provide, oh, you guys can advocate, we're just here to provide information.
And thank you for that information.
Okay, well, let's move on then to the superintendent's report. Mr. Rafe?
All right. Let's light this candle, Mr. Spinner. Love everything about it. That's his favorite phrase. We'll get off, we'll get, we'll get this back on a happy track. So I talked about this earlier. That's it. Space lettuce. That's right. Oh, get ready, Mr. Spinner's going to tweet. Mr. Spinner, good side. Let me know when. Good side, I'll let you know. I talked about this earlier, the kids at the, at the seminary academy have been growing lettuce that is going to space. And now they're into another phase of that. They submitted for Ozon Design 3D-printed pots that would reduce overcrowding in the grow station. So they're going for their second trial, they just did a Skype conference, and in April, they're headed to Florida to share the results of their research, so.
That's pretty cool.
Just like the Martian.
Yeah, exactly. High-level stuff. This is a, we really, really want to bring everybody's attention to this. February 12th at Orange High School, PPT's doing hidden in plain sight. This is just something every parent should come to see because our kids are really good, the ones who are involved in the drug and alcohol culture are really good at hiding things. And parents, I'll never forget, I had a, my very first one of the first administrative seminars I went to was something very similar to this. And there was a law enforcement person who was talking about a parent who was telling her how, telling him how they, she, she was buying her daughter five cans of hairspray a week. And she just thought her daughter was the most wonderful, generous, sharing person around. Well, they were huffing the hairspray. And just those kind of behaviors can be learned to make parents more aware, how kids are using technology, how they're hiding things, and to uncover clues with regards to drug use and abuse. So hidden in plain sight, February 12th. Got a couple of teachers at Orange High School, Mrs. Repko and Mr. Nicola. They are hosting Orange Net. It's a, we've got business professionals coming in, talk about careers, practice the basics of handshaking, business, kind of business behaviors, making introductions, transitioning between conversations. It's like a professional speaking seminar. So I'm really looking forward to it. I think we have a, have a meeting prior to that, but I'm really looking forward, going over and see what Mrs. Repko and Mr. Nicola are putting together. I think it's a great opportunity for the kids at Orange High, so. Also at Orange High, big, big Orange night, highlighting a lot of stuff going on at Orange. It's all right. But Orange, as everybody knows, does an incre, all our schools are doing an incredible job of military appreciation. But Orange really hits it out of the park. This Friday, they're doing another, their, their winter military appreciation night, so they'll invite all military personnel and veterans to the game, have all the support organizations there. And I really compliment Mr. McDermott for all the work he's doing on that. And as your flowers and your recognition, thank you, Mr. Bobo, for being here, and your hats and scarves, so I hope you enjoy those, just a small gift on behalf of us. We are highly appreciative. I say all this, now my fifth year as superintendent, I just couldn't, I feel like I'm the luckiest superintendent in, in the state because I have had just such a great time working with all of you. And I don't think people understand, along with my six-figure, alleged six-figure bonus that all of you make, what was it?
Excessive salaries.
It's like seven cents an hour. Two-hundred thousand, I thought it was $200,000.
Oh, I, I just, I just saw excessive salaries.
Excessive board salaries.
$125 a meeting and all the, you know, taxes are taken out of it.
That's, that when it's all said and done, you typically donate back because you're giving to OEF and.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
It's like we're on the board of a Ukrainian gas company.
So, thank you. I'm really, I say it all the time, on behalf of, you know, of our staff and our students and, and the people in the community, just, we, we all deal with, we all go to the, to the last negative comment we heard and we think a lot of times, everybody feels that way. And that's not the case. There are truly thousands and thousands of people who appreciate your work and, and the work you do on be, on behalf of our staff and students in our community is making a huge difference for thousands and thousands and thousands of kids. Multiply it, how long you've been on the board, how many kids have walked across that stage? Just, it's, think about that sometimes when you get, when you get a little down, so. Two quick agenda items, we've got a couple of retirements, Vicki Stegner in Transportation, Marty Reig, one of our food service workers, I addressed, Emily and I addressed the food service workers today. She's been at Liberty High since it opened, just the most, and it's just, it was always so awesome to, and Todd, and Todd can attest to this, the kids always go to the same line, to go through the line to see their favorite lady on the cash register. They will not deviate. So Marty is one of those special, special people, so we'll miss her. And as our upcoming important dates, one community conference, encourage everybody to attend that. Next board meeting's the 13th, and we're halfway through February. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Rafe.
Mr. Rafe, I have a question. It's on the agenda.
Yeah, yes.
We're approving supplemental contracts like we do at many of the meetings, but I noticed on here, there are volunteers that we're approving for Washington DC trips.
Yes.
I saw on social media, we don't approve volunteers.
We do.
Thank you.
Some of the buildings, you know, again, that, they're buildings, the buildings, we have five, obviously five trips, five trip coordinators, there's history behind some of it. Some of the buildings use volunteers, some of the buildings have chosen not to use volunteers, they split up to supplemental contracts. I appreciate the people that go and volunteer, but I guess, I know, if I were a middle school principal, I probably would use a certified, professional, educated teacher to be a volunteer or not to, I mean, to be a.
Chaperone.
Properly super, to chaperone a student on a trip, something, especially something in the magnitude of, of DC. But I, I don't feel compelled to jump in on those, that, that decision for those building principals and, and the trip coordinators. They put a lot of time and effort to run trips, so.
I just wanted to set the record straight when.
We do.
Somebody is preaching the reverse.
Miss, Mrs. Hafield, the treasurer's report. I was lost here for a second.
Not a problem. It's been a long couple of weeks. So just a few items to mention that our, that our department has been working on. We have added a PAFR, or Popular Annual Financial Report, to our, to the treasurer's web overview page, as well as a forecast summary. So there are two new tools to help read financial statements that we issue on a regular basis for the community. The information is pared down, highlights are included. It's just a quick overview of the large documents for the CAFR and then the five-year forecast as well. So please take a moment to check those out. We are starting to receive our advancements on our 2019 taxes. As the community may or may not know, we receive payment on the tax, taxes a year after. So we were just receiving now in 2020, the collections for 2019 taxes. We will have budget templates are scheduled to be released next week, and we have established our dates with the Finance and Audit Committee to start that review process on that forecast. The full committee will be meeting in early April to review that, and we will have first reading of the May update at the April 23 meeting. And then, just to highlight some items from the treasurer's action items tonight, we have the November and December financial statements. At this point, we are still on target. Thank you for the lighting. That was kind of like appropriate for the comment, wasn't it? We have, our state funding appears, if you look at the statement, appears to be larger than we had anticipated. However, the state just started issuing the new funding in October, so it's going to look like it's ahead of schedule month over month, but by the end of the fiscal year should level out as the year goes through and progresses to the end. We continue to see gains in our investments, and our monthly forecasts are under-forecasted estimates at this point, but we feel that those will level out as well. In terms of donations, we would like to thank Cheshire Elementary, PTO, Olentangy Braves Little League, Jersey Mikes, Raising Cane, Lar Web, the Olentangy Liberty Athletic Boosters, and Olentangy Orange Athletic Boosters. They have made donations for several different items, from playground shades to baseball storage, monetary donations, donations of in-kind, and donations for additional coaching staff. For those, we are all grateful. And we want to make sure that we recognize our community members for their time and efforts in the buildings and with our students that are not necessarily monetary donations. So we thank those individuals as well. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hafield.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public participation this evening?
Yes, we do, please. We have two. So I will call each individual up. The first on the list is Mary Beth Graham. If you wouldn't mind, we would like you to join us at the podium, please. Participants are, have been recognized. We ask that when you reach the podium, you state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm Mary Beth Graham, and I reside at 6 West Gate Drive, which is in Delaware. So you may wonder, why am I here tonight talking to the Olentangy School Board? Well, I own property, it's been in my family since 1840, in Berlins Township, so I am a valid taxpayer here. And I appreciate your time and just a few comments that I would like to make. First of all, your plates are full and overflowing, I should say, with the levy coming up, and I wish you all the best of luck with that. I'm sorry that my daughter isn't here tonight. We've been kind of a tandem team for a number of months with the zoning board meetings and things like that. She taught for 23 years in Olentangy Middle School, and her name's Amy Iken, some of you may recognize that name at least. And I'm very proud of the service that she gave to the students of this district. Well, you're all to be commended. I will add my commendation for all of your hard work. I know what it's like to sit on that side of the table. Because before I moved here, I lived in a suburb of Dayton, and for 19 years, I served on the board. I was president several times. So I understand not only your frustrations, but your great joys. And you're to be commended for having one of the finest school districts in the state of Ohio. So we thank you for that. I'm here tonight with concerns about potential zoning that is being discussed, has been discussed for a number of months with the zoning board. And it will be discussed by the Berlins Township trustees in a few weeks. And it has to do with making sort of general decisions over a wide area. At one time, they were including 2,000 acres. Now I think it's a little less than that. But the concern is that the proposed land that you have with possible school being built there on Sweeney Road and near Sweeney and Curve, part of that land is being considered as light industry. And I think we don't know how that's going to be defined, and I don't think you will either. But to think of something and that kind of a possibility next to one of your schools with many, many of the students there, how is that going to impact them? And aren't there other ways that can be considered in a partnership between the school district and the citizens of Berlins Township? So we invite you to, in that free moment that you might have, but to consider being more involved and letting us, the citizens, or representing citizens of Berlins Township, to know about the school district and how you feel about the neighbors of the schools that you will be constructing in the future. So there are lots of ways, we want to, we, the citizens, and I've been going to some of their meetings as well, so I do include myself as one of them. We'd like you to partner in creating a culture that's innovative, that maintains the agricultural flavor of Berlins Township, and that celebrates the history of this area of Ohio. There are great opportunities to develop and to nurture the relationship between the Olentangy School District and Berlins Township community. So I'm just putting a little, a little thought in your mind, and I hope that you will find a few moments to consider that. Good luck with the levy. I appreciate you listening to these few moments, and I'm happy to have the next speaker give you much more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Rail. If you would please join us at the podium, please. If you wouldn't mind, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed members of the board and Superintendent Rafe. My name is Dr. Megan Rail, and I live at 4935 State Route 37 East. First and foremost, congratulations, Dr. Weiss, and thank you all so much for your devotion to the education of our kids and our community. Should the March levy have the good fortune of passing, it's my understanding that the northern areas would be the focus for a future school, and that the school district owns land within Berlins Township that is currently under consideration for overlay, known as the Berlin Industrial Overlay. Last year, district leadership commented in a local paper about being confident the board would support this industrial overlay, which includes the potential of up to 60 feet high, buildings consisting of light industrial and logistic permitted uses. and logistic permitted uses directly to the north side of the school district's property, as well as the potential of 45 feet high, high-density apartments immediately to the east of the property. Many families in Berlin Township like myself are quite concerned, not simply for our own backyards, but even more so for the impact this kind of development would have on the spaces and safety in the community, especially should a future school be put in near or around the recommend Berlin Industrial Overlay. The proposed overlay is now under review from the township trustees, and so the purpose of my comments to all of you this evening is to highlight two broader concerns for your kind consideration, as well as make one request. The first concern, based on the tax analysis produced by the Montrose Group as it relates to the Berlin Business Park proposal, these data showcase that light industrial businesses retain approximately one-third the market value per square foot as compared to commercial use businesses. As a result, favoring commercial use without light industrial or logistics seems as though it has the potential to yield a much stronger revenue per developed acre in the long term. So it seems disadvantageous simply from a monetary perspective alone to support industrial over commercial use, not to mention the looming concerns related to community and safety. The second concern, as all of you know, learning at its finest occurs when it extends beyond the brick and mortar of the schools created, includes not only the context of family support, but the support of the broader community. As an educator myself, whole brain teaching has taken root, and while these techniques have been centered on the learner in the classroom, I think they should be properly extended into the, into integrating the elements of the physical geographical space that surrounds the learner and the school. This is what I would like to call whole community learning. Wherever the schools are placed in the north, should that be the chosen area, it would be beneficial to connect to the township's rural roots through elements such as partnerships with agri-hoods, environmental centers, and providing opportunities to develop a different kind of thriving community. It is connections to spaces and authentically lived experiences within the community that 21st century learning can genuinely flourish in new ways. It's been reported that 85% of the jobs that will exist in 2030 have not been invented yet, and so I urge the board to balance its support in ways that economic development was genuinely meant, namely with the consideration of the well-being and the quality of life of the learners in the context of broader prosperous community that your board serves. In closing, I would like to please ask that you focus support on that commercial tax-based growth over industrial and logistics, and further, please balance the tax-based growth with supporting the preservation and connection to the communities our kids learn in and around. As such, I'd also ask that you kindly not support the Berlin Industrial Overlay, and instead, request that any development supported by this board provide demonstrable evidence for the ways it will positively contribute to whole community learning. I would now like to provide you with a com, a copy of the analysis, as well as a copy of my comments for this evening, and a map of the proposal, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rail. Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield, that is it for public participation, correct?
Correct.
Would you please present the treasurer action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasurer action items A through D for approval, please.
I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rafe, would you please present the superintendent action items?
Yes, please, I will present superintendent action items A through F for approval.
I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to point out that if anybody's interested, the facility rental pricing structure is in, in there. And those are, that, you know, we do rent out our facilities, and there are stages of how much everybody pays, and we get a lot of questions about that. But after we approve these, we also, we always put them up on the website, and that's where I refer people.
And I believe there wasn't a change, they renegotiate them every other year, is that correct, Mr. Rafe? The rental rates are every other year that we.
I know, every year.
Every year?
I think that's been our practice, but I mean, as a board, we could change it anytime.
Thank you. Okay, with that, will you please call the roll? Mrs. Hatfield?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. They'll please call the roll. I'll give you a second. Dr. Weiss? Oh, that was, Dr. Weiss.
Thank you. Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned. Our next board meeting will be here 6:30 on Thursday, February 13th. Thank you for joining us.
And that's 6:30, right?
6:30.